Are we ready? Ready, Hoppel?
Yep.
This is a form devoted... By the way, my name is Barbara King. I'm a lead moderator. I don't live in Saddlebrook, so I can't vote for any of these candidates. And we hope that you submit your questions, listen to the answers, and make a mind about who to vote for. This is a form devoted to hearing the views only of the candidates running for the Board of Education. Three seats, there are five candidates. To ensure that the meeting is as informative as possible, we ask that everyone abide by the following. Audience questions and candidates' remarks must follow a lead policy of being concerned with issues and not personalities. The moderator will not allow any abusive, personalized, or irrelevant questions or remarks. So that we can move along in the time allotted and hear equally from each candidate, we ask that you hold your applause until the end of the form. Audience questioners should use the cards provided to write their question. And if you want to specifically address a question to one person, that can be done, but the other candidates will have the opportunity to answer the question. As I said, the questions should only address those issues that would be coming before the Board of Education. We will try to avoid redundancy and select the questions to ensure a range of topics. We're going to start the evening with each of the candidates making an opening statement. They will have one minute. We have a timekeeper sitting over here. After thirty seconds of the opening statement has elapsed, she'll hold up a yellow sign that says thirty seconds. And after the time is up, there will be a red stop sign. You can complete your sentence. If not, I will interrupt and interrupt, and then we take the mic away. So we are going to start with... Just for your information also, there is a fifth candidate who could not make it this evening, Christopher Winnie. So we only have the four candidates right here. The first candidate to make their opening statement is Haley Traverso.
I've been an involved resident and school parent for the past twenty-six years. With three children having graduated from Saddlebrook and two who are still students in the district, I have continued to remain active in the PTA/PTO continuously for twenty-three year tenure in the schools with many more years to come. I have served as president, vice president, and secretary for eight years while also sitting on the county PTA level. My community involvement includes being a coach and manager for both softball and Little League for fourteen years, and I continue my involvement and awareness of the educational community with my regular attendance at Board of Education meetings. This allows for me to keep up to date on current issues and concerns. My career history as a manager, mediator, and parent education coordinator with a background in family law and juvenile justice has given me the analytical leadership and collaborative skill set to be an active listener, planner, and skilled negotiator while focusing on our children's needs academically and emotionally.
Thank you very much. That's all right. When you're ready. Mariana Iannello.
Hello, my name is Maudie Iannello. I have been a resident of Saddlebrook for fifteen years. I am married with two children in the district. My educational background began with a bachelor's in science and a minor in psychology. Upon graduation, I entered the world of business and worked my way to a managerial position at Don Karen International. During my term there, I realized my true love was teaching, so I went back to school and got my teaching certificate. I started my educational journey at Heldon Public School. I'm there for thirteen years, and during my tenure, I have been a second grade teacher, a third grade teacher, an inclusion teacher, and presently hold a... I'm a basic skills teacher. My teaching philosophy is that students need to feel secure, encouraged, and challenged. In order to meet the needs of each one of my students, I provide them with the willingness to serve their needs, and I have never faltered from this.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to tonight's meeting of candidates. I would like to start by introducing myself. My name is Michelle Roloff. I'm one of the candidates running for the Board of Education. I am a third-generation Saddlebrookian, born and raised in Saddlebrook by my amazing mother, Rosalie, who is here with me tonight, is also a longtime life-bond resident of Saddlebrook. I have a wonderful partner, James Mazur, and our two beautiful daughters, Madison, who is thirteen, and in eighth grade, and Marissa, who is ten, as in fifth grade. My daughter Madison currently attends middle school. My Marissa attends Helen Ismit School. I am blessed to have wonderful siblings as well. My sister Debbie and my brother Mark are also Saddlebrook residents. My partner's mother, Florence Mazur, is town councilwoman here in Saddlebrook. As you can see, Saddlebrook is deeply rooted in our family's history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Quinn. I'm a resident for eighteen years. Both of my children went through Saddlebrook schools, first through twelve. I have a graduating... My son is graduating this year. I have a BA from Rider University and an MFA from Sarah Lawrence College. I'm finishing right now my second term on the Board of Ed. We've done a lot of focus on student achievement. We still aren't where we need to be. We're still focusing on that. With the new superintendent, we're going to be doing some strategic planning coming up, and an increased focus on data to project the student achievement. This year is a critical election for our district. With the new superintendent, you need a board that both has experience and knowledge and knows how to give superintendent administration the support they need to succeed. Our children need to get better education, and they need this to succeed. They go hand in hand. I'm involved on both the town, county, and state levels with the Board of Education.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to questions from the audience. When I call on you, it will be in random order. I try not to have you follow the same person or speak before the same person, so we're going to mix it up a little bit. This question is, "What can you do to make the board more cohesive?" And let's start with Mariana Iannello.
Well, I think the first thing needs to be is an open-minded communication between all of the board members. I think we need to come to the table to be honest with one another and listen. There's a saying that you have two ears and one mouth for a reason, so we should listen twice as much as we speak. I think we should be honorable to each other to speak and listen, and I think just being able to understand that we may not agree, but it's fine to... You have to respect one another.
Okay. And by the way, you have a minute and a half to answer. Stephen Quinn?
Yeah, that has been an issue with some of my time on the board. On the board, we have a lot of strong personalities. I think every one of us cares very, very deeply about student achievement and the students as a whole in this district. Sometimes the friction comes from that because we don't always agree on what is the best course of action. Additionally, I think we need to trust each other and talk to each other and keep it to ourselves. I don't think airing everything in public is good for the cohesiveness. It just tends to create more and more issues. There's no reason we can't talk about it ourselves in the boardroom and make things work much better. Those are the main things, and respecting each other and not wanting to jump to conclusions or automatically accusing people when you don't know whether they have or haven't done it. Simple respect, simple communication, and we can get along much better.
Thank you. Michelle Roloff?
I agree with what you say. Communication is key. We need to talk. We all need to get along. We all need to have our own views, but also listen to everybody else's views and accept them for what they are. Can't always argue about what they have to say. We have to listen and understand. Everybody needs to worry about the children in the district and not worry about their own personal views on who's saying what on social media, who's doing what on social media. It's about our school. It's about the kids.
And Haley Traverso?
One of my biggest words that I like to use, even with children, is the word "team", and you probably all know what that means. Together, everyone achieves more. That includes our community in addition to just the Board of Ed, and we need to have a better communication, obviously amongst ourselves and along with the community and the parents of the children that we're trying to take care of and make safe and, of course, be appropriate educators. The way, as Mr. Quinn said, the way we express ourselves is very, very important. We don't need other communities that I see day to day because I'm a substitute in various districts tell me, "Oh, yeah, we saw that in the article, or we saw this, we saw that." That's the kind of stuff that needs to stop. We all need to share our knowledge. We all need to go to trainings when they're offered to us. We need to communicate. We need to network. It shouldn't just be, "Well, that's the way it was done in Saddlebrook." It should stay. We need to say, "There's four or five other towns that do it this way. Maybe we should look into it. It may not work for us." It might. But I just think that... Well, communication, I think I'm going to leave it at that. We need to communicate to every individual in this town when possible.
Thank you. Question. It's a bit of a preamble. For the past thirty to forty years, the state of New Jersey has done a lot to raise the standards of educators. Everything from certification to changing tenure laws to increasing grade point average for new hires. However, the past eight years, Saddlebrook educators have watched as their take-home pay decreases every year. Many are taking home less money today than eight years ago. How do you expect to attract and retain the best educators for our children while demanding the highest quality in the workforce if the pay is decreasing? And we're going to start with Mr. Quinn.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say we have an excellent staff here. Our teachers are wonderful. They work incredibly hard, and they want every single child in their class to succeed year after year. We now have an excellent administrative team that are very, very involved and active in helping us increase the student achievement. They're working together great, and with the new guidance from the superintendent, that's going to help. So first, know that we have great people in the school district working for us. Secondly, part of the problem is the changes that Governor Christie made with the insurance and the percentage of payments. So teachers are now paying into the insurance, a percentage of depending on their salary. That hit the teachers a lot. Part of the problem we have is we... I'd love to pay starting teacher a hundred thousand dollars a year. It'd be wonderful. Teachers do not get the respect they deserve in this country. Unfortunately, our budgets are capped at two percent a year. It's very limited. Every year, we have trouble just making the ends meet, and we're cutting out things we need for our students because there's not enough money. Our increase is lower than the rate of inflation. And you know, you take insurance, which we're in a state of insurance, but they'll still walk thirteen percent. It's a hard problem. We love our teachers. We respect our teachers, and we'll do everything we can for them.
Thank you. Haley Traverso?
You all know the saying, "If you love your job, you'll never work a day in your life." I agree with Mr. Quinn again that we have a great staff across the board. We're not a high-paying town. We're not a high-paying district. But these teachers that are here that are long-term, and there's a lot of them, and yes, there's some new ones, are here because they love their job. But we want to make sure they continue to love their job. Keep somebody happy. Keep them comfortable. Keep them informed. Don't throw surprises at them. And I agree also with Mr. Quinn. I'd like to handle a lot of money. It's not going to happen, at least not anytime soon. I mean, I know that when I previously worked for the state and had the same situations, again, they took away, like you said, we paid so much more into our medical and all these kinds of things, but, you know, if you love your job, you're going to stay. It doesn't matter what the salary is. I mean, obviously, we want it to be, you know, something you can live off of because that's, you know, not what's... That's what's more important. But if the teachers love your children, they love their job, they're going to do it appropriately. Just keep them comfortable, happy, and informed.
Ms. Roloff?
Teachers' pay definitely should be a lot higher than it is. They're raising our children. They're teaching them how to become better people. They're our next generation, and they don't get enough. And with good leadership, and I welcome our new superintendent, and I hear that she's doing amazing things this year, and acknowledging the teachers and praising them for the jobs that they do do and not just, you know, "Oh, well, they're supposed to do it. That's their job." No. Let them know that they're doing a great job. Let them know that, you know, we appreciate everything they do, whether they're getting paid enough or not. They're there for our children, and that's what matters. And, you know, acknowledge them, let them know what a great job they're doing every day, even if it's seeing them in the hallway and saying, "You taught an awesome class. That was such a good thing you did for that child." They all need our help.
And Ms. Iannello?
As an educator, I truly understand how the teachers feel. There's many times where I wish my pay was much more than what it is. However, with the two percent cap that we have in our district, there's not a lot of money to spread. So we need to find different ways to make the teachers feel appreciated and work with them so that they are valued and they see that they are valued. Many times, the extra things that we do as educators on a daily basis, we don't... They're not acknowledged, whether it be by our administrative team or a parent or the community. I think as a whole, we need to appreciate the teachers, what they're doing, and find those little incentives, whether it be wearing jeans on every Friday, whether it be maybe we can increase the stipend for a dollar or two, whether it be acknowledging them in a speech or something at the morning announcements, something where they feel valued. At the end of the day, I think every teacher would like more money, but we want the respect and the acknowledgement that we're educating your children, and we're doing everything we can for not a great deal of pay.
Next question. What is one trait that you possess that will be an asset to the board? And we'll start with Ms. Roloff.
Well, I raise two children. I own a home in Saddlebrook. I own a business in Saddlebrook. I do my best every day to be a good person and do the right thing by my children, by my business. I talk to people every day. I hear all their concerns, and I'm a good listener, and I like to be an advocate for our taxpayers and bring it to the board and let them know where they're coming from and what their concerns are. And even though I'm really nervous, I really do communicate well. So don't let it fool you. I'm a people person, believe it or not. I really am. And I enjoy being with people and talking with people, and letting the voice be heard of the people in our town, I think is very important. It's not only important for me to get up here and like boss people around and tell people what to do. It's about all that's making a difference because I care.
Ms. Iannello?
I would say, even though it may not be exactly a trait, would be my education background, children are the main focus here. It's been part of my everyday life for the last thirteen years of teaching, the last fifteen years as being a parent. So the main things we want to make our kids feel safe, encouraged, challenged. I possess the experience in the field, so when there are concerns brought to my attention, I will truly understand what plan that can be made in the best mindset of a student. Having a minor in psychology, I understand child development, but yet, as a parent, I understand how the community member may feel when they come and they're upset by something that is not right in their child's life. So I think my experience would be my strongest asset to the board, as well as being a community member and a parent with two children in the district.
Ms. Traverso?
Everything I do with my life, personal, business, professional, doesn't matter, is proactive. I believe in due diligence. I was trained to do due diligence. I try not to misspeak myself, but it happens. It happens to all of us, every one of us. I'm a communicator. I'm highly educated. I am currently, although it's a very slow process, in the process of trying to get my teaching certification through the alternate loop program. And I have the experience, not just from subbing, because I've been doing that for quite a while now, but I'm out there and I'm in all the different schools and the different districts, and I see what goes on academically, emotionally, on each of the school levels, the grade And I happened to be at the meeting when the superintendent spoke last week about our school scores, and we need to get those up. We really need to move on that. Thank you.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes, well, one trick would be far too short of an answer, so I'll give you a few. When I'm a life longer, I'm very analytical and I'm very dedicated. I like to look at the whole picture to make sure I have all the information to make the best decisions possible. I can work with anyone, and I have experience as an educator, but I'm a college level, which gives a completely different and unique perspective on what we need to do for our children coming out of K through 12 systems. You see a lot of the weaknesses when you work with freshmen at a college level. I understand the system. I know how the system works, where the funding comes from. I know a lot of people within the NJSPA and other areas to reach out and get answers when I need answers that aren't readily available. Lastly, I'm very ethical, and I think one of the big points is I am not on social media.
Okay, next question. What do you feel is the biggest issue facing our current Board of Education, and how should it be handled? And we're going to start with Haley Traverso.
Well, as I just mentioned, I don't know that you can sit there and say that one is much, much higher than the other. A lot of them are very equivalent, but our academic scores, as much as we don't want to teach to the test, and we don't want to sit there and say to the kids, "That's what matters right now. You have to take a test, and you have to pass it." We need to get those scores up. Budget's always a concern, but somehow, we make the money when we need it. And more so right now, I think it's new and it's coming across the board again with multiple school districts, and it's our security issue. We know that Smith School has their, I believe it's called the Merid, and yes, I have subbed in Smith School in the past, and I've seen it, and I think we do need it in every school. So I hope that that's passed with the referendum on the elections in a few weeks. So I can't tell you that any one of those is more important than the other. I think they're all very important. How do you sit there and choose? The kid's safety, the kid's academics, the kid's what? You know, their emotional status. It's all... You need very positive emotional status to be educated appropriately, and of course, you want them to feel safe. So I think they're all very equivalent.
Ms. Roloff?
Can we just repeat that question?
Sure. What do you feel is the biggest issue facing our current Board of Education, and how should it be handled?
I think that it's important that we retain our personnel that we have. Our top leaders need to stay where they are for more than a year or two or three. It's important that we all work together on a lot of these issues. Security is a big issue. I think that, you know, the kid's safety. We had a lot of trauma last year with kids and their emotions. And I think that's a major issue in our school district, having, understanding our children I think we need to bring together our Board of Ed and all get along and communicate better in order to have a stronger education base for our children. More workshops, bring in maybe more speakers, just to boost morale around here, more positive attitudes.
Mr. Quinn?
I think definitely the biggest issue we've been facing is tons of changes within our district with the administration and superintendents. It's very hard to really move forward at a strong pace when the people leading the district are always leading. We finally have a very strong administrative team. I think they're all staying. We need them to support and do everything we can to keep them. Secondly, we must keep our superintendent. We have a new superintendent. She is incredible. She has great knowledge in curriculum, instruction, and how to work data to help our students improve. This district cannot afford to lose another superintendent. We've gone through far too many in the last six years. It is critical that we keep some consistency within this district for us to improve. Those are the two biggest. And I'll stop there.
Ms. Iannello?
I feel one of the biggest challenges we have is increasing our parrot scores this year. However, as Mrs. Shanley pointed out in our last board meeting, she has an excellent plan on how to improve student achievement that will not only enable students to improve their scores this year, but for the future. Her plan is very heavily based on reading, increasing reading, and all of the data shows that by increasing reading on a daily basis, it will help increase their knowledge. I also believe that we need to keep our current quality staff of administration as well as a superintendent. Another concern is the security. However, I believe the plan has already been set by Mrs. Shanley. She already has outlined how to improve the safety in all of our schools. I know that we have already installed cameras in the middle school, high school, which have increased the security. There's other security measures that have been in place, and more are planned out. So I think combining all of those together, our challenges we're facing, however, I think she's got an excellent plan set out so that we will be able to achieve every single one of those challenges.
Thank you. Our next question. Will you be supporting the recommendation to convert Washington School to a middle school? And we'll start with Ms. Iannello.
I have to say, there's just not enough data that I am aware of at this present time to say whether I would support it or not. I was here for the spring Board of Ed meeting where it was pitched to the community, and I heard both sides of how the community felt. Prior, before answering whether I would vote for that, I would want to see the logic behind it, the reasoning, the statistics behind this kind of a switch. I would like to take a tour of the facilities to see where they're lacking in space. I would like to analyze the data for the influx of students coming in. I would like to speak with the architect to see about the most cost-effective plan for our community. I would not vote on anything without reviewing all of the data presented to me. I'm not privy to that information right now, so I couldn't give you a definite answer. However, I would surely vote for anything that's in the best interest of our community and students with thinking of our taxpayer, because this is a great deal of money that I would not easily just... I'm sorry. I would have to evaluate it.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Yes, first, I would like to say a little correction. We're not really looking at converting Washington School to a middle school. We would be replacing Washington School with a new middle school. Washington School is at a point where it would be very... It would not be cost-effective to try and renovate it into a middle school. I will most likely be supporting that. We are in the process... We are in the process of gathering a lot more information to make sure that the early information and research we have is correct. In that, one of the things off the bat that a middle school would be great for our students is their social and emotional well-being. The middle schoolers having their own school is huge for their personal development. So right off the bat, that's research I've done, and you can research it everywhere. That is a huge plus for them. Academically, I think it's also going to be extremely good for our school system and will really help them grow as students. The other problem is that we're really running out of school, room at the elementary schools. We have one of the schools that converted a closet, a janitor's closet, into the faculty restroom. That's how tight spaces go. And with all of the new changes the state is making us add, we're going to be no possible way of...
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Traverso.
Absolutely, 100%. I will be supporting a converted middle school of some sorts, whether it's at the location of Washington School, some other area of that we might have, I don't know what that might be. And again, I'm going to refer to, I've been around in many districts. We are one of the very few districts in our local surrounding areas that still goes up to sixth grade. Most of them are at least fifth through eighth grade, possibly sixth through eighth. There are a few local districts that actually start fourth grade as middle school, one of which I do sub in constantly. Not in the middle school, I stay in the elementary school. But, so yes, in terms of the support of switching to a middle school at lower levels, yes. Whether it's Washington School, I have to agree with Ms. Sayenella. I don't think we have that information up here at this home.
Ms. Roloff.
I honestly don't know too much information about the process that they're willing to take to, I guess they're going to knock it all down and rebuild. I think it's a lot of money. From what I hear, it's a lot of money. I don't know specifics on it. So for me to say whether I would vote yes or no, I would just want to gather more information and find out where everyone's coming from. We all have a choice in the matter, so I'd like to hear more options on other places they could have it, what they can do. And like I said, I really don't know too much about it, so I'd have to research it more.
Thank you. Next question. What do you feel is a strength in our district? And we're going to start with Ms. Quinn.
One of our biggest strengths is our community. We have a very strong community. We're very much family-oriented in that we might fight among ourselves, but whenever there's an issue, this community comes together like no other. And we are there for each and every one of us. That shows with our students. We have excellent faculty and administration, as I've said before. We have everything we need to grow. And we just need to keep people here and stay focused on the right things and not get sidetracked with a lot of little issues. We have to focus on our students and driving their education forward. We have the people, and there's no reason we can't do it.
Ms. Roloff.
We have a lot of people in this town that care about what goes on. That's our biggest strength. Having a strong leadership in our school system is huge. And having them stay and care as much as we do about our town and wanting to see us all do well, and see, making the students do well. And when there's tragedies in our town, they do, they all come together. Everyone willing to help families. Everybody chips in to make sure the kids are okay. Everyone's taken care of, families are taken care of. Like I said, there was unfortunate things that went on last year. And, you know, we were in a rough time. You know, nobody knew where to turn, but they turned to each other and everyone came together. And it's a small town, everyone knows everybody. You think it's, you think you know everyone, and then when you see more people coming in, you're like, "Oh, I didn't know you lived in town," but everyone knows everybody. And we all care about each other, and we care about our children.
Ms. Sayenella. I think one of our biggest strengths is our staff, the administrative team, and superintendent. Along with that, I would say our community and the parents. We are a tightly group. There are many parents who care about their children and children as well. They support one another. They rally around each other. This passion did go through a lot of tragedy, however, along with the students, the administration team, the teachers, the parents, we all supported one another. And we were here for one another, and as a community, we came together. And any negativity that was going on was pushed aside. And we were just wanting to help out one another. So I think it's a really lovely thing that we have here. The community where I work, there's really no parent involvement, unfortunately. There is a lot of teachers, but to see the flip side of that, it's a wonderful strength that we have here. So I would like to continue to see that, and I think we will.
Ms. Traverso.
I like this question. On the first day of school, everybody sat there and posted their pictures as they normally do, whether your child is in kindergarten or a senior in high school. You know, everybody's first day of pictures, here's your smile, you know. And it hit me, and my post was something to the fact that this is why our community is such a whole, a positive whole. Because our children grew up together from day one, even if they were in a different elementary school. They became on the same soccer team, baseball team, so forth. Most of them have remained friends. And that stayed through, or there's positive tendencies. And that's staying through until potentially their senior year. I can't tell you how many people after that post realized that my kids all grew up with, and I now will have three graduations this coming June at various levels, along with multiple families in the town having the same three graduations. Some of them being college level as well. Because our friends kept us as friends, our friends kept us strong. And again, to repeat what I think everybody here has said, we come together in times of need. Let's now try to come together, even if it's not necessarily, you know, needed, if that makes sense. But it is a very strong community. I mean, I love it here.
Many of you are parents or significant others of teachers or administrators. How do you plan to maintain separate roles when dealing with school issues? And we're going to start with Ms. Roloff.
I don't, so I don't have an issue with that. I will be voting on everything. And I think we need that on the board, that they'll always have a vote for me. I don't have anybody that works for the school in my family. I don't have anybody that wants a job or is becoming a teacher. I'll hire them or they'll hire them. So I'm all good there.
Ms. Traverso.
I have to agree with Ms. Roloff. I also am not a conflicted member. As much as I am slowly in the process of trying to become a teacher, it's going to be years before that happens. I will probably be out of this tenure should I be elected, before that, you know, before that teaching spot occurs. So again, I will be voting on everything. There's no reason to abstain from anything. And I will do it with the thoughts of the community. What the community is asking for, what the community needs, as long as it's proven to me that's why we need it.
Ms. Sayenella. I understand the community's concerns with my husband being an administrator in the district. I would like to preface my answer by stating that I am my own entity from my husband. I have my own opinions. I will make every decision based on what's in the best interest of the students. I will be diligent to remain completely objective to my responsibilities on the board. For that reason, it would be unethical for me to participate in any discussions or voting regarding my husband directly. I would abstain from any discussions or voting when that situation would arise.
Ms. Quinn.
Yes, as I said earlier, my son graduates this June, and that's the only possible conflict I have within this district. However, when I started, I had two children in the district. And it's not always easy to separate the two. But it's one of those things that as a board member, you have to do. When I'm in the boardroom, I'm a board member. My family does not count. It is every child that counts, and that's it. There are times that you have to keep in check and make sure you are doing it just for every single student. And if you can do that, you have no issues. My son being already basically out the door, I will not have any issues going forward, but it will still be the same thing. All of my decisions are made on the basis of what is in the best interest of every single student in this district. And they always will be.
Again, our teachers are without a contract. Our teachers deserve our support as well as the students. How will you support our staff? And this question, we'll start with Ms. Sayenella.
I think the, my approach would be to going to negotiations. If I was part of negotiation, wouldn't open the mind. I understand the position of a teacher, and that certain factors will bring unnatural emotions on both sides of the table. If I was part of the negotiating team, I would not use regressive bargaining. I understand there's only a 2% cap, so there's not a lot of monies to distribute. However, if we have an open and honest line of communication, I think that we can reach an agreement that would make both sides happy.
Ms. Quinn.
Well, first, I know this might be unpopular answer, but the teachers actually do have a contract. It's the same contract they were in last year, that is still in force. Unfortunately, this year, it's been a weird year. There's been a lot of issues trying to schedule meetings to go forward with the contracts. I don't think there's any per se issue that I am aware of at this time as far as moving forward and getting a contract with the teachers other than scheduling and getting time for our board members on the negotiation team or board member to sit down and work out the contract that they normally do. It is not unusual for a contract not to have been completed by this time of year. Generally, the board starts in January or February, and very rarely is it actually completed by June 10th. Or June 30th, I should say. We support our teachers, we like our teachers. We will give them as much support as we can possibly give them. We do that every year, and with a very limited flow of money, sometimes it's difficult to work out the actual nuts and bolts of it.
Ms. Traverso.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Again, our teachers are without a contract. Our teachers deserve our support as well as the students. How will you support our staff?
I think we've all said it earlier. We need to treat them with cold and gloves right now. I know that's how, it may not sound a lot to you, and it's some of them, it may not even sound a lot to them. I deeply and greatly respect every teacher that I've ever come across in this district. Again, at all levels. I feel I've had a great professional relationship with all of them. I communicate with them on a constant basis, whether they have my student now, my child now, or had them in the past, or may have them in the future. I have a great background actually in negotiations, so I hope when it comes to that time, that I'm going to be a big part of that and use some of that past history that I had. Things have changed obviously over the years for all state employees. But I can just hold their hand and ensure them that I am going to work my, excuse me, pushy off to make things work the best that we can with what is available and keep them happy.
Ms. Roloff.
Teachers are valuable in our town. We see a lot coming and going, and to get up there and fight for them would be something easy to do. Negotiate, get on the negotiation team and try to do what's right for our teachers and get them the best possible contract in their best interest. Do my best to fight and get what they deserve.
Okay, next question. What is your opinion on outsourcing and privatization of support staff? And we'll start with Ms. Quinn.
Yeah, that's one that comes up every round. In general, I don't like outsourcing. When you have dedicated people, the same people, working every day with the same people, I think you get much better results. There are some positions that, due to necessity, get outsourced because there's not enough work to have a full-time person. And there's some outsourcing, you could say, just sending kids out of district. That's outsourcing. Sometimes you have to do it. As far as outsourcing the staff and the personnel we currently have, no, I'm not for that at all, and I never will. You take care of your own, and you have to be part of the group to continue taking care of it. So unless there's a reason to have to outsource or reasons that we can't take care of it in here, that's fine. Other than that, I will not back outsourcing.
Ms. Roloff.
I wouldn't outsource. I think keeping it in our community, keeping it in our schools. We have plenty of people that can take care of what needs to get done. I don't think that we should have to hire outside the box. Keep it in the box, keep it safe.
Ms. Sayenella.
Well, if we're talking about things to students and outsourcing, I would say it would be whatever is in the need of the student. If we have the facilities and the teacher and the program to take care of the needs of the student in here, absolutely, I would agree that it needs, the student needs to stay in district. However, there are occasions when the needs of the student is beyond the reach and the scope of what we can do in the school. At that point, it's in the best interest of the student to be out of district. Now, if we're looking at the number of students, I would agree that we would like to keep as many of them in district as possible. If we're talking about staff, I would say definitely not outsourcing. I myself experienced that at my own job. We do have some aides who are part of, have been part of our district for years and are employed by our district. They are by far the best aides that we have. The ones that are outsourced are random. They come in, we have not had a good experience with them. They don't really care about the kids, and I should say, the experience I had, not all. Not everyone feels that way. I think once you build a relationship with that aide, they will stay with you and they're going to care for your child the way you would care for them. Outsourcing doesn't line to that.
Ms. Traverso.
I have mixed feelings. Many years ago, I would have said, "Outsource them." Not as in the student, but you're asking, your major question, I think, was the support staff, if I remember the question correctly. Because I felt, even on a personal level with my older students, I have much older students, children, I felt people in town just talked. The support staff that might have been there for your child for one-on-one or even just in the room as a support teacher for the entire class. And I felt people just couldn't keep their mouths quiet and put it blunt. As the years have gone on, I found that to stop. I think it kind of started to dwindle down, so to speak, when we took a step on bullying. Because the children bullying you because the parents are kind of bullying. And that's what parents would do, "Oh, I saw that student today, and they did X, Y, Z," whatever. And I'm still mixed, so I'm not saying I'm 100% for outsourcing. Even looking at your substitutes, you know, we outsource to an agency that, again, a lot of districts are outsourcing to, and it's a horrible system. I work for them, it's a horrible system.
How do you feel about hiring alternate group teachers as opposed to qualified, normal, past teachers? And we'll start with Ms. Traverso.
You heard me say it before, that's the track that I'm on right now. I'm highly educated, had a degree for 30 years, 35 years. I chose to go alternate group when I started subbing. I loved what I was doing. I'm not a sub that goes in as a babysitter. I'm a sub that goes in and teaches. And everybody that I do sub for knows that, so these teachers give me plans and I work with them. And everybody that I do sub for knows that, so these teachers give me plans and I work with them. I've done alternate subbing already, and I enjoy it. So for me, how can I tell you that I'm against it because I'm not? You do have to go to school. You don't just walk in and say, "Hey, I wanna be an alternate, you know, teaching alternate group," and that's the end of it. You have to continue schooling. I have to pass the practice exams. That's what's holding me right now. I'm just on a slow level right now. I passed half, I still have half to go. Not being in school for 35 years. And, you know, some of the stuff that they're asking you for is, you know, like, I wanna go elementary school, just for example. They want you to know high school, college, open math, just for example. You know, that doesn't mean that I'm a horrible teacher. I'm asked back day after day, and I work almost full-time in one particular district because that's how they like me, they like what I do. So do I think alternate group is wrong? I don't. You just need the right person for the right reasons.
Ms. Ayenell.
I don't know exactly how I feel about this. I didn't choose alternate group. I went back for my teaching certificate. One of the main reasons was I wanted to understand the pedagogy of teaching, and I felt the alternate group didn't give me that. I needed to understand the development of children, the educational background, the book knowledge. When you're a student teaching and when you're doing your practicum, you get the hands-on experience. But having the education behind it and understanding helped me to become a better student-teacher. So it wasn't the route that I chose. I'm not gonna say that it's not the correct route or there's a problem with it. I guess it's each his own. For me, I wanted the education behind it. So I chose to do, go back and get my certificate. Although I do work with some teachers who did go that way, and they're excellent teachers. So I think it's gonna be, it's based on the person.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes, I agree that alternate group program isn't for everybody. It is really based on the qualifications of the actual person. Just because they're going alternate group does not by any means mean that they're less qualified or not gonna be as good of a teacher. Right now, our high school has an alternate group math teacher, and from everything I hear, he is excellent. What really separates him maybe from some others is because he is there to make sure the kids succeed. He knows the subject matter, and he works to make sure every student actually understands what he's teaching. So as long as they're qualified and our administrative team, who interviews, feels that they will be a good teacher, I will back that up. We need the best teachers, and I'm more concerned about getting the best teachers than where they graduated from or what their work history is and whether they've gone alternate group or not. I just want the best for our students.
Ms. Romoff.
I think that if they have our children's best interests at heart and if they're well-educated enough to teach a class and their experience, or they get in there. Not everybody has experience lifelong. They go in and they try to just do their best at what they're doing. Who am I to judge whether they started the career as being a teacher or they ended up at the end just changing their degree to make it to teach. I think that it's okay, as long as they have their children's best interests at heart and our kids are learning, then I think that it's a good thing.
The next question wants to know, you've all mentioned that you do not like the revolving door for the superintendent's position and principles. So the question is, what do you think we can do to keep our leadership in place? And we'll start with Ms. Romoff.
Acknowledge the fact that they're doing a great job when they're doing it. Listen to them. Don't go against what they're saying all the time. Try to understand that they have a job to do and that they have our children. They're interested in the best. They just want the best for our children. And everybody needs a boss, and nobody likes to listen to a boss all the time, but we all need a good, strong leader. And, you know, letting her know she's doing a good job and keeping her on her toes is not a bad thing. And just giving her credit where credit is due.
Mr. Quinn.
One of the most important things is to give them support and acknowledgement on a regular basis. By support, I don't mean just when the board's meeting and saying yes to all of the recommendations that the superintendent makes. It's supporting them when you're not in the board meeting, when you're outside and you're talking to the parents and the teachers. You have to support them. That's, if you don't support the people that are running your school, you're not going anywhere. The board members have to stay doing what their job is, which is the policy, the planning, and the oversight, and not get involved with day-to-day issues or try to run the district. That's our superintendent's job. That's why we hired her. And she will make sure everything works going down from there. It's very important not to cross those lines because once you do, you make everything harder. And I think the other thing, and I hope a lot of people understand this statement, but stay off social media when it involves school or board matters. Typically, I have not seen where it has been a positive thing for our district, anybody commenting on social media concerning anything to do with our district. I know our district has a Twitter site that is run by the administration. Great. But we've got to do our job and let them do theirs.
Okay. Ms. Tversel.
One of our biggest roles is the management oversight, superintendent's, principals, higher administration. And if we evaluate on a continuous, regular basis the things that are going on, first of all, the action plans that are out there, the goals that the superintendent may have, the progress reports along the way, and during all of that time, we're supporting her for him, and those achievements are coming to fruition, we better make sure that superintendent knows it, that what she has done is an amazing thing. And I agree with an earlier statement, earlier this evening, that we have an amazing superintendent right now. And when I sat and read that report, again, about the scores and whatnot, and the ideas that she has behind it, I was like, wow, tough, but tough in a good way. That she's tough, and she's going to make this happen. And I want to be here the day that all of this comes to fruition, where we can say, "Oh, my God, we did this, we made it." She did this. And she did it because we helped her, we supported her, we acknowledged her, and we communicated with her.
Ms. Ayenell.
I think it's very important that there's an open line of communication between both parties, board and superintendent. I think, as Mr. Quinn had said, we need to understand the roles of a board member, of a superintendent. The role of a board member is not to interact in day-to-day activities. We are not the administrative team. We need to understand and support the superintendent's vision to facilitate, to assist the district goals, to create policies or to approve policies, but understand the vision that is set forth by the superintendent and help the superintendent achieve it. Our job as a board would be to look out for our students and for the community, to know our place, our role, and to help the superintendent. So I think there have been times or in the past that maybe the vision of the superintendent was not in agreement with the board. However, there has to be an open line and understand and stay on that path to support the superintendent.
Okay. Next question. Name two goals you have for the district that you'd like to work on if you were elected for the three-year term. And we'll start with Ms. Ayenell.
Well, my main goal, if I were to be on the board, would be to facilitate, to assist, and support meeting the district and the board goals. I would like to really work collaboratively with the board and Mrs. Hanley to adopt policies, to promote student achievement. I would like to be a positive link between the community and board members. I'm sorry, positively, between the community and the administration to address any concerns that the community has. One other focus I would have is to review our bylaws and make them more current and authentic to our community.
Okay. Ms. Tversel.
Something that really hasn't been discussed yet tonight, and I'm very big upon it of, and that's special education. I have several of my own children who have been in the special education programs, some more severe than others. And then I have students who've been honor students. They need advocacy. They need support. They need to be placed in the appropriate programs, sections, classes. And again, their guidance counselors, their teachers, no matter what level it's on, they need to be told who these students are, what they're capable of, what they're not capable of. So for me, that's one big goal. I mean, I have several, but I think we're only asking for one at this point, and that's really where I need to take a step in. I mean, I always wanna, I wanna make sure bullying doesn't occur at every level. I have a four-year-old granddaughter who's being bullied in her nursery school by a five-year-old. Really? You know, so I want that to stop at that level because then it won't hit our older children. But I just think that special education sometimes falls by the wayside. Now, Saddlebrook has come up probably 100%, but there's another 100% for it to go, if that makes sense to you. They need support. I mean, that's what I can say. I need to work on that. That's a big goal of mine.
Ms. Romoff.
I think that we need more vocational programs and life electives. I think these kids just go out there and not everyone's college material. And I think that they need to learn more in our school. I mean, even if they do go to college, do they know how to cook? Do they do their own laundry? Do they know how to balance a checkbook? They think that a checkbook is, it's a card. They can't even sign a check. They don't even know cursive. I think that's so important. I think that we should bring it here in our community and not put them on a list and send them out for them to go learn how to cut hair or, you know, or write a check. I think that that's very important, that we should have something in-house. And I think it's very important to bring the BOE together and encourage more of a cohesive team. I think that there's been too much turmoil, and I think that if everybody got along better, I think it would be better for the community.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes. My goal, when I became a board member almost six years ago, is still the same goal I have right now, and that is do everything possible to make Saddlebrook a top 100 school in this state. We can do it. Our children are that good, our parents are that good, and there's no reason for us not to get there. So that's my number one goal. We want to be a top 100 school. With our special ed, and when I say student achievement, understand that's every student across the board in this district. Everyone needs to come up a level and just keep going up levels. Special ed is one of the places we've been having a revolving door in the director's special services. That's hurting our program greatly. We really have an excellent director right now. Anybody that saw the meeting, she has done a lot of work already after just being hired and has really set out strong goals and process to improve our special education program. Hopefully, she will stay with us and see this all through. Other goals is our district needs to get a strategic plan, which is like a five-to-10-year plan involving everyone in the community. We knew this for a while. Hopefully, we'll get that done in the next year or so. Always increase security and safety for our students. Please vote yes on question two for that.
Okay. I'm gonna ask one last question. Sort of a throwaway question because it's more of your philosophy, but if your vote was not with the majority of the board, would you change your vote or stay with your heart? And Mr. Quinn, would you start?
That's an interesting question, and it's quite as easy to answer as it might sound. It really depends on the vote and the issues. There have been many a times that I have not voted with the board because I strongly believe it was not in the best interest. However, as soon as that vote is done and the majority of the board goes a different direction than I thought, I support their decision 100% because you have to support the majority decision of the board. There have been some times where I didn't really think it was the right call, but there was absolutely no reason or good that it would be done by voting against it. And for the sake of continuity and keeping everybody together and showing support, I voted with the rest of the board. Every situation is different. You have to go with what you really, truly believe to be in the best interest of everyone.
Ms. Ayenell.
I would agree with Mr. Quinn. I think it would depend on the situation and the question and what you were discussing. I would need to know all the information and to view, hear the other side. Why I don't agree with something, I would like to see what is your reasoning for it. To hearing different opinions and what their reasoning is would help me to help decide. If at the end, I truly believed it was not in the best interest of the students, I would vote no.
Ms. Tversel.
I think there might be a piece missing to that question. And what I mean is, if you're asking if it's majority, then if eight are saying one thing and I'm saying the other, we know which way it's gonna go then. So I think that part of it, I think, is a little bit irrelevant. If you're asking if I happen to be the tiebreaker because four now said yes and four said no, I would then agree with my co-candidate here that every question is different. I think it's going to matter. It's gonna matter what's in that question and where it's going towards. But I will say this, and those of you that are here that do know me well, I am my own person, I have my own minds, and I'm going to state what I believe is correct. It's a belief, that's all it is.
Ms. Romoff.
I agree with everybody up here. And both, you know, let you know. I think that I have a strong personality, so I'll stick to, and I'll be firm on my own beliefs, unless they can explain to me otherwise on the situation. And if they have, if it holds good value and I could agree to it, then I could, you know, be persuaded somewhat. But it would have to depend on the situation.
Now, we're gonna go to closing statements. I was given the impression that the candidates were not aware that you would have time for closing statements. We are scheduled to have, take two minutes, two to two and a half. Just, you know, keep watching over here. How about when you get to two, put up the 30-second sign, and we'll give the two and a half. And we're going to start in reverse order. Mr. Quinn goes first.
Thank you. Yes, I did not know there was gonna be a closing statement, so I'm completely waiting this. First, I want to say, because I very quickly have the last one, please vote yes on question number two. Regardless of who up here you vote for, vote yes on question number two. It is giving us a lot more safety and security for all of our students and our schools. It is a one-time expense. It will not increase your taxes past this one time for the average house owner, which I think is $350,000. It amounts to $34, one-time fee. It will do wonders for our safety and security. So please do that. With our teachers, we talk about our teachers quite a bit in our administration. One of the things the country needs to do, and our community as well, is start treating teachers like the professionals that they are and give them the respect that they deserve for the work that they do. It would be great to give them more money. Governor Murphy is trying to act... Governor Murphy is trying to actually find a way to fund so that the, the state funding plan that is out there can actually be done the way it's supposed to be. And that would greatly increase the amount of money we have to work with. I don't think it's going to get solved in the next year, probably next, next two. It may never get solved, but hopefully at least we'll get some increase in the budget and be able to add that to our progress. Quickly, I want to go back to the outsourcing. I don't know if this is what people were wondering about. Yes, we have outsourced the lunch program, because with all of the state regulations, et cetera, involved with actually doing student lunches right now, with federal regulations, there is no way we could afford to do that in-house. They get almost as many changes as tax companies do every year now. It's a lot of work, and that's just something that a school is naturally set up to deal with. We also had to outsource our substitutes, basically because we could not get enough substitutes because we were not using the same technologies all of the other school districts in the county. I'm here for the students. I'm here for the town. I want to see our students grow personally and academically, and I will continue fighting like I have the past six years to help this district succeed and become a top 100 district. Thank you very much. I'm glad to see you. Good crowd here tonight. This is the best showing I've had for one of these. So, thank you all for attending.
Michelle Rollough.
I just want to start by saying, the reason I'm running for the Board of Ed is because I sincerely care about our children. I'm also aware that many parents and taxpayers care tremendously as well. It's not easy for parents or residents of this town to speak up or voice the concerns, and I want to be that voice. I want to be the one to make change and speak on their behalf and make their voices heard. I have never been the type of woman that would hold back on something that I intensely care about. It is very important to me that all of the Board of Education members work together, and I want to help make the best possible choices for our school system and children. I know I cannot do any of this alone. It will take all of us, on the BOE, the parents, and our taxpayers, to come together to make positive change for our school system. The main topics of my agenda, agenda, is school safety, zero tolerance for bullying, a voice for our parents and children, the need for more vocational programs and life skills, advocate for taxpayers, and to bring the Board of Ed and encourage more of a cohesive team. This wasn't as easy as it looks. I'm just like all of you. I'm just up here. I just want to make a difference, and I care just as much as all of you do. Vote number five. Thank you.
Mariana Ayanello.
I feel I'm a highly qualified candidate for the Board of Ed because I have a vast amount of experience in education to bring to the table. I would play a trifle of a role on the board between being a community member, a mother, and an educator. I've been an active member of this community for many years, and feel I can provide assistance ensuring the district is responsive to the core values, beliefs, and priorities of the community. I'm also a mother with two children in the district, and I want to ensure that they and their peers grow up with the best education we can provide for them, and to set them up for success. Lastly, of course, being an educator for as long as I have been helps. Education has been a part of my everyday life for as long as I can remember, whether it being at work or educating my daughters at home. If elected, I would be another successful link between the community and the administration to ensure that our schools can be the absolute best they can be. I just want what's best for our students, because that's just who I am as a person. It's part of my job, it's part of me as a mother, and part of this community. I would like to just give back to the community in a role that I feel that I would be very comfortable with, and that I could be successful in.
And Haley Traverso.
First of all, I want to congratulate all my co-candidate. I think everyone of you up here, and I, I hope myself, you'd have to tell me that, I had some amazing answers. And I hope there are answers that some of us can fill as time goes on. And right now, all of you, if you're not, should be thinking, who are the right candidates? I'm here to tell you. I'm here for all the right people. I personally fought for change for my family, for others, and for the district and town as a whole. I have succeeded in preventing unnecessary and detrimental staff changes in the district. I have succeeded in making sure town-wide events are not scheduled on religious holidays. I am a trained manager, speaker, and negotiator, and I know how to get things accomplished. I don't ever give up. I will fight until the end. Unlike many of the other board members, as we've talked about, are conflicted, I am not conflicted. I would be able to join the board as a non-conflicted member, ready, willing, and able to vote, and take on any challenges that we face. I vow to keep things sincere, dignified, confidential, and honest. I've watched Saddle Brook District come a long way in my 26 years, but there is still room for improvement, not only for my children or my grandchildren, but for all children, your children. Let's help keep Saddle Brook School District relevant and on the map in a positive light. Vote for me on Election Day, and I will help bring it and keep us here.
I have some additional announcements. There is a public question on the ballot this year. It's titled, "Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act." And the question stated is, "Do you approve the Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act?" This bond act authorizes state tuition bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $500 million. The money from the sale of the bonds would be used to provide grants to schools, school districts, county vocational school districts, and county colleges. Money from the grants would be used to build, equip, and expand facilities to increase career and technical education program capacity, something we heard mentioned. And money will also be used for school, school security upgrades, and school district water infrastructure improvement projects. The other announcement is that the League of Women Voters of Bergen County is sponsoring two candidate forums. If you're not doing anything, next Tuesday night, head on over to the Dickinson Hall at Fairleigh Dickinson University. There is a candidate's forum for Bergen County executives. There are two candidates running. And on Wednesday, October 24th, at 7:30, at Westwood Regional High School, the Bergen County League is hosting a candidate's forum for Congressional District Five. There happen to be four candidates, and they are all going to be appearing. I left some information over on the table here. If you need a vote-by-mail ballot, you can still send it in by October 30th, or you have until the 5th of November to appear in person, handed in, and you get a ballot. And a publication from the League of Women Voters about choosing a candidate in New Jersey gives you some pointers. At this point, I would like to thank the Saddle Brook PTO, PTA, I'm not sure which one, oh, okay, for hosting this forum. It's being shown on your local TV stations, and at this point, let's give the candidates a hand. Maybe the candidates will entertain some personal questions or...
Quickly, I would like to thank you, the League of Women Voters, and the PTO for bringing this all together. You did an excellent job, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.